The function of the board is to provide zoning flexibility. The action of the board can be an interpretation which involves an interpretation of the zoning code text, or a zoning district boundary. We may also issue a variance, which is an appeal to vary from the strict application of the zoning code. The meeting is videotaped tonight? Is videotaped, it is important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience observe, respect for the speaker. When the appeal in which you are interested is called, please come forward to the podium, and allow the board a moment to review the material which you give your name and address to the secretary. Let's have a roll call.
Bruce Gale?
Here.
David Helpa?
Present.
Jack Nash?
Present.
Nancy Borchardt? Edna Jones Webb, excused. Deanna Versiglio?
Here.
Sir Chairman, you have a quorum.
Now, do I have a motion on approval of minutes from our last, I mean?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from September twenty five, or September 5th.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do we have an approval on the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business, elections.
I also wanted to mention, I sent you guys your bylaws. I don't know that you guys have ever seen them before, or what. They show that they are not approved, they show that they're a draft. Edna asked that we get another month to review them and then discuss them after the meeting.
Okay.
Want us to approve them, but it does say that there's a vice chair, a chair, and a secretary.
Okay, we can wait a month then?
Yes.
Yep, we can do that for elections as well.
Well, we could.
Yeah.
Let's move, ask for movement as possible.
To table it?
No.
No. Well, have a motion to postpone the elections?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now, we have case J 19-0004, a variance request to allow the homeowner to park a motor home in the street side yard at 2126 North Clinton.
So the homeowner has asked me to present on his behalf. He is, he has a lot of health issues, and he wasn't able to get out today. Hi.
This is the meeting?
Yep. Yep, the zoning board. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, so, um, so public comment is at the end of this? So then you'll be able to speak, but I'm going to present it first.
Public comment, or is it comments on this?
What do you guys usually do? Do you have the comments go first, or the presentation?
Oh yeah, go to presentation first.
Oh, okay, but then they don't have to go in the comments section, they would go now?
No, no.
Like after the presentation?
After presentation.
Okay, okay. So when you have a seat after I speak, you can talk.
The public, the public comment would be about something totally different, not related to this.
Okay, thanks, Jack.
Okay, Board of Appeals on Zoning Application. Basically, description is Steve would like to park his motor home in his street side yard. It's a zoning district, R1, he's asking for a variance. He's got the address and everything listed, and he applied on January 17th, and this is the day that we're going to talk about it.
Oh, he sent me this email previously this week. Yeah, he has a bunch of health issues, and he didn't feel comfortable driving at night.
Especially tonight.
Yeah, so, um, so I'm just going to read exactly what he wrote in this email. So number one, "I bought my home with the understanding I could park my motor home where it is located now. I did my due diligence by communicating with the zoning department along with having my attorney communicate directly with them." I am providing two copies of the email supporting those facts. He did supply those emails, but they were talking about a different ordinance, a different section of the ordinance that doesn't even apply, which is, I guess, what the zoning administrator at the time, I believe her name was Stephanie, couple zoning administrators previous, was saying might not allow him to park there, but that one really isn't even relevant, and that's what his attorney proved. So that's not the issue here, the issue is that he needs to be 10 feet from the street, from his property line, because that is the street sideline. Prior to me purchasing my property, there was and still is what appears to be an old ice cream truck parked directly across the street from me on Davenport Avenue. It's parked in the yard area yet located out beyond the house property line similar to the same situation as mine. I feel that person is allowed to park his unit, as such, I should be allowed to do so as well. My motor home has been parked at its current location for the past seven years without any complaints until it's more than obvious, the complaint is frivolous without merit, and retaliatory to the complaints I openly made against my neighbors prior to them complaining about my motor home. It makes no good sense that someone would make a complaint about my motor home without making a complaint about the ice cream truck parked across the street if they truly found it offensive for some reason. When Mr. Peter Salo, the code enforcer officer, informed me about the complaint, he stated he didn't see any good reason for the complaint and stated it didn't obstruct the view of any traffic. He also suggested the complaint could have been retaliatory if I had made my recent complaints against my neighbors. I informed him I did so, and explained I openly stood right outside their house to take pictures to send in with my complaint, which he stated my complaint was well warranted, and went on to thank me for doing so, and stated the city needs our help and also wants to keep the city clean. He also thanked me for taking good care of my property and suggested I should apply for a variance, and stated he couldn't see any reason why it wouldn't be approved. Moving the motor home location will cause me an insufferable hardship financially and cause great property damage at the same time. I live on a single fixed low income and simply cannot afford the cost of moving it. To move it just within the house boundary line would completely demolish the lawn and the ground deep below the surface level. Since I have a limited gate width which dictates my maneuverability, including a very large tree directly behind its current location, I would need to make too many back and forth maneuvers while turning the front wheels, which with previous experience, I know for fact, tears up the ground terribly. I need to confirm this, but I believe the net weight is around 14,000 pounds. To avoid that, I would need to remove my fence or part of it and/or install a new fence in order to relocate it so it wouldn't require as many maneuvers. And particularly, in practicality stakes, I'd make, I'd like to move it over to the far north side of the property, which is the opposite side from where it's located right now, directly as it sits now because it would offer an easier entrance and exit onto the roadway in relation to the driveways opening at the curb/street area. But that presents the same problem as above and causes a much greater unaffordable cost. I'd surely need to install a fully stoned driveway that could handle the extra weight and install a new fence as well. The fence would need to be erected out about the same location as my current fence is that runs along the south side of the motor home's current location. I would need the extra distance in order to swing the motor home in and out from that north position, and even at that, I would need to extend the driveway closer to my house to accomplish that feat because there simply isn't enough distance to back it in parallel. I would also need to trim a lot of large sections of tree branches out of the way to park it back there, and I wouldn't be happy to do that either. The cost to do all of that would be unreasonable to us into this property, especially if the neighborhood continues to deteriorate as it is doing so. Ultimately, aesthetics wins out in my book. Although I would like to move it over to the north side for practicality's sake, if I could afford it, I would still most likely wouldn't do it because I believe it would chop up the view too much. Its current location simply seems perfect in relation to my property layout, fence, and gate. Also acts like a continuum to the line of large pine trees my rear neighbor has located to the south side of his property bordering Davenport Avenue. With his trees and my motor home lined up in a straight row, it allows us both large spacious view between our backyards. I need this variance for all reasons listed above, but most importantly as well to show these people who make these frivolous retaliatory complaints who have also run down this neighborhood that you in the City Hall won't be manipulated and will show them who, will show them you have the ultimate power to make the healthy decisions for the greater good of the city and community. Lastly, please understand I need your support now more than ever. Both of the neighbors that I've made complaints against recently have tried to buy my motor home from me previously. When I turned the one person's offer down, he and his group lodged a personal war against me and in doing so has turned this neighborhood upside down and destroyed the peace and dignity without any concern for others. Also, after not communicating with the neighbors across the street for about the last two years this past spring, I asked them if we could talk, and once we talked outside my place, they showed no interest and informed me that the reason they came over was because they were convinced I was going to give them my motor home. A thought that could only be derived from thinking I was in such great fear from their cohorts and themselves that I was now attempting to buy my peace and safety. This is not a mere case of a request for a variance, it's a much larger than that. It's a matter of one neighbor standing up for decency and trying to maintain a healthy neighborhood and keeping it from turning into a slum. And although I have lost my windshield and have been threatened to have the rest of my windows broken out and have threats made against me and the rest of my property, and are now living in greater fear than before, these people are starting to conform to a certain degree, and I believe your decision will resonate to them and to a much larger audience of neighbors that could possibly cause a domino effect and keep this neighborhood from turning into a slum if they know they have the city's support behind them. So obviously, there's a lot of issues going on with this case.
Thank you.
Yep, so as you can see in the case, the main, what we would be giving him a variance for is to let him park within that 10-foot length, just so you know, I'll point that out.
Now, is that 10 feet from the sidewalk?
From the property line, which is essentially sidewalk, yeah. Which is just a little bit within it.
Yeah, he's got to be probably four feet within it.
Yeah, yeah, so it is pretty minor to move the motor home over, but he said he's, with the way that the gate is, you can see from the pictures, it is most convenient that it's here, and maybe it is pretty hard to maneuver it around, but yeah.
Okay.
So in this situation, how long has this been sitting here like this?
Seven years. And I drove by it, and it doesn't break up your line of view? Even if you would turn, it's really far back from the corner too, so.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Doesn't seem like a big issue, except that it is within that 10, 10-foot setback. So should we have comments, or?
After, after the appellant's presentation, which you have done, anyone interested in the appeal may come forward, give his or her name and address to the secretary. Please make your comments brief and to the point.
Hi, I'm Alicia, I'm the neighbor across the street.
Go up there.
Sorry.
Could I get your last name?
Neighbor across the street doesn't get it.
Sorry, um, Alicia.
You can just talk into the mic, sorry.
I don't know if I'm in court or not right now.
Yeah, you are being recorded.
Okay.
You didn't, you weren't here when that went. Okay, now your address.
Um, 2129 North Clinton.
Sorry, last name?
Oh, J E K E L. Okay, so we've lived in our house for five years. We always are the first ones to go and help the neighbors next door, across the street, wherever. He is the neighbor across the street from us on, okay. And, um, so this gentleman wants to sit here and keep calling the city when there obviously have other things that they really could be doing. I get a violation every other week for trash cans for whatever may be that he was not happy with, the way I parked, the way, you know, the way my kids took the trash out, my kids didn't bring the trash cans in, or, you know, we're trying to teach.
That has nothing to do with this.
This is what it is though, the retaliation of it, it's not retaliation. It's the facts of, it's a zoning ordinance. If I'm supposed to be in ordinance with my stuff, then so should he. And if it's such a big deal, then why, where he, like, how he parks it and to move it, how did you get it into the first place, because that fence was up? I mean, you never pulled a permit for it, I'm sure, because that fence was there.
The fence is fine.
The fence, yeah, but how did he get it back there? You know what I'm saying, so it wasn't that hard of a thing, he did it, he put it back there. The fence is already up before anything. Gale and, I can't think of her husband's name, passed away, that lived in that house that that fence has been up for a long time.
Yeah, he just backed it in there?
He backed it in there and put it in there.
Right.
But he's making a big deal that he can't move it, but then you got the other neighbors that can't see over on State Street. You have cats that are living in it, like, if anybody's bringing the neighborhood down, it's him with the 100,000 cats that are in the neighborhood. And going in there, however, I don't know how they get in there, but you can see them, the tracks. And, I mean, I don't care what he does. You stay over there, don't videotape my children. All of this has conspired because of the violations of, my kids left their bikes out one night, and he right there, and the next morning was calling, and it's a continuous thing. And I don't think that if you're gonna, you're gonna complain about someone else, check your own stuff first, because I know when I, when I lived in the township, if it wasn't parked on concrete, you can't have it parked. Concrete gravel, that's in the township, and I didn't know if that's the same as the city. And I called and I asked the city, and then they were like, oh, we don't know. I never called to, like, make the violation on them, I just called to curiosity. And they asked me the address and everything, well, I already knew then, I'm like, oh, now they're gonna go check. That's great, that's fine, but there's no reason for him to make all these excuses and reasonings of why he can't do something, because I could do that too, you know? Like, why things aren't the way he wants them done, or, it's just, it's obstructing the view when you're in the backyard of the neighbor's house anyway, you can't see on State Street. Just the other day, they had kids break into the cars in the neighborhood, and they caught them.
Is it Stane or Davenport?
Um, Davenport.
Okay.
And the kids were hiding behind that, so the cops were looking for them, and I'm like, on the phone with 911, and I'm like, they're over here by the motor home, and then they go and run through his backyard and over the fence, and then they ended up catching the kids. But, like, there's gotta be a happy medium for everybody, for, there has to be. Because if there, like, there's no reason for either one of us to have issues because we have to live across, with each other in the neighborhood. We have to be able to figure out a way, and if he's gonna keep sitting there videotaping my kids, I do have a problem with that. I, I'm, there's a video camera that goes on 24 hours a day. It turns on and off as you walk out of my house. It's kind of quite creepy, and I'm, if he wants to watch me all day, he can, that's great, but don't, don't try to do it to affect me and my life, and, you know? I own a business, I have two children, I'm sorry, I don't sit home all day and worry about what everybody else is doing. I try to make, you know, my house, my things, what I need to do, you know? And it just bothers me that it's, you gotta pick out a kid to get to the parent, like, there's no reason for it. And, I don't know, I just don't, I don't think that there's a reason that he should have it parked right there if it's, if you're so worried about what I'm doing right here, walking up and down my stairs, like, happy medium. There's no insurance, no plates.
If you talk, you have to.
You, you, you'll get your turn.
And, you know, I'm, our neighbors are our neighbors, and I'm always there to help them, and I've went over there and asked them if he needed help snowblowing or shoveling. Nope, I got it, okay, I try, I try. My neighbor next door had a hip replacement, I was there shoveling his driveway for him. There's no reason for us to be.
Can I get your phone number?
You know, I don't, I'm not, I don't like to work that much. I just, I think that that's what we should be doing, helping our neighbors that can't, in that sense, you know?
You've made your statement, do you have any questions for us?
Do they have to, does he have to have it parked on gravel, or any, like, is?
That is, is not our.
Okay, because he's so worried about it being, like, breaking up the yard, but it's sunk in anyway, so why did you park it without have, I mean?
It's what seven years does to it.
Right.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, I just want a happy medium.
Hi, I'm Frank Kolinski, I live at 1926 Clinton, or State Street. I live on the corner of Clinton and State. My question is, I know.
Clinton and State, not Davenport, right?
I'm on State Street.
Okay.
My address is State Street, 1926.
I just wondered.
My property almost goes off with the corner of Davenport. There's only one house in between me and Davenport.
Could you spell your last name for me?
It's K O L I N S K I.
Thank you.
And my question is, that vehicle's been sitting there for seven years. I know better ways, if a vehicle ain't plated right, and it's a motor vehicle, that they get either, they had to get it moved. I know that's, that's gotta be an ordinance, because I had it done on other properties in Carlton Township. We got too many vehicles, or whatever, and I feel like the guy's using that as a privacy fence too. No, it's a motor home, just sitting there. It's a looking motor home as far as I can see, but in all reality, he shouldn't have that right, to have that vehicle not be plated or insured while it's sitting in that, in that yard like that. And it is a distraction, in my eyes. He's using it as a privacy fence, or for his cat house, or whatever he's using it for. Because I do got stray cats by my house, I don't know where they're coming from. You know, digging underneath my porch, you know, I had to take care of, but, and they seem to be coming that way. And that's my, my, my only question is, you know, I know vehicles, motor vehicles need to be plated. If they sit in there too loud, they need to be removed, that's all I gotta say about it. Thank you.
I have a question, how do you know that it is not plated or insured?
Well, I walk by it, and plus I know it's been sitting there forever, and I know it hasn't been moved. So, and I figured it probably isn't plated, and doesn't it have all the state plates or something?
Um, I don't.
I haven't really checked, you know, or anything lately, or anything like that, but I walk by it, you know, I can tell you that it's probably not plated and probably not insured, and it's sitting there. You know, why don't I pull a motor home in and use it as a privacy fence at my yard? I got a chain link fence all the way around my yard, and I do have a small section of privacy fence. If I got stuff that needs to be not seen, I put that kind of stuff back there. And I have a garage where I have to store my stuff, I don't leave my yard a mess, so.
Okay.
Understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, this may sound foolish, but it's required. Is there anybody else in, in present that wants to make comments?
Space time include.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make comments about this issue? Third time, is there anybody else in the audience that wants to make comments about this issue?
It's the law, it's the law.
That's what we have to do. Okay.
The other neighbor couldn't attend, and.
That's okay. Now, the board will discuss the appeal. Anything?
First of all, with what Cassie read, that's all in his words, correct?
Yep.
That was not a legal opinion from his lawyer?
No.
That was his summation of what was going on.
Yes.
Secondly.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I said, everything that she read was his summation of the situation, and it wasn't a legal opinion from anybody. The second thing, as you read that, there's a lot of, a lot of information about the financial hardships. Zoning Board cannot make decisions on financial hardships. So if there's, you know, if you go buy a building and it's not zoned correctly, but you try to put another business in there, you should check on it before you buy the building. So, we can't, we cannot make a decision on a financial hardship.
Along those lines, he did check, and he was given bad information.
Is it written down, did you see it?
Is it written down, Cassie?
Yes, I have an email, but like I said, it was about a different code that doesn't even pertain to his property. They thought, they were looking at a code that says you can't store certain types of buses and things. So it doesn't, yeah, it's not a motor home.
And I think, I'm not sure, but I think the gentleman is correct about it's gotta be able to be moved or driven on the street and not just stored there, I think. I know vehicles are that way, cars, you just can't, you can't talk.
It would be hard, it would be hard pressed for him to move it at this point because the tires are not gonna work.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Uh.
Unfortunately, it may be being used as a storage situation, more than.
For his cats, yeah.
I don't know, I can't say that.
Yeah, I know, we're not sure of that. Anybody else want to make any comments about the issue? Then we will have a vote. Do I have a motion on?
I make a motion that we approve the variance for J 190004.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
We cannot make a decision on financial hardships.
Agreed. Any other discussion?
I agree with that.
All those in favor?
In favor of voting for?
Voting for the variance. Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion kick, does not carry.
It was denied.
Means he's gotta move it.
He's gotta move it.
Thank you.
What it means, we have to, we have to prove it, we have to say we're gonna prove it, but we can vote it down.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm late.
We have to do it.
Rules, rules of.
Rules are the rules. Kind of backwards, but rules are rules.
Right.
It was denied.
Yep.
So Jack, I, I have this, do we sign it right now? Remember at the planning commission, I had you.
Exactly.
Well, we, we gotta go over.
Before we, before we leave, we have to sign it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any old business to discuss? Now you can make public comment.
Oh shoot, now I don't know.
It would be about a different issue if you want to.
A different one, okay. I got one, I do, and I hate to even sound like this. I, I'm gonna make a little bit of a complaint about the, um, same copies. I received a letter from the courthouse stating that I had a fine of $210, and I was confused of why, and I opened it up, and then I called the next day, and I ended up having to call the city, and it was for not having a business license in 2018. Now, I didn't have my business in the city in 2018, I moved into the township. They didn't have their facts correct. I moved out, and I told them, I came down and told them that I moved, and I've had several, like, all of a sudden I got all these letters and posting on the buildings, and then I was like, well, where did all of this come from? I wasn't, I wasn't there, I have, like, my, signed my lease.
First, first off, we're not.
Oh, I can't do that, oh.
No, we're gonna have to, you're gonna, we're not that.
Yeah, we can't do anything about that, you should talk to the clerk's office.
Clerk, okay, sorry, I came over here with you guys, you know? And then I do have, though, I have a hearing on the 18th because I was, I'm refusing to pay for something, it was in the front of my house, and my neighbors and the other neighbors on between the two.
It's not zoning though, is it?
It is, I believe, I believe at least. I think I have the paper with me. Or zoning, oh, you know what?
I doubt you have to come before the zoning.
It was said that, I think I left it out, it said, they are, a public hearing on the 18th.
It might be City Council.
Okay.
I'm not sure, it's not listening.
Well, it was for, um, I had two yard waste bags from cleaning up the front where this, I thought the city sweepers came, and I guess they don't. And I was like, but it was all in front of the house where, like, people throw their garbage out the window and collections, you know? And so I cleaned it all up because my mom was yelling at me, and she said, your house looks like crap. I said, I'm waiting for the city sweep, I don't know, like, I don't. Brought my hose out there a few times, Mom, to clean the side, you know, and didn't, it's still gonna be there. And so then I. And so then I ended up taking it and dragging it up and then the garbage wouldn't take it and then I got a violation and I was like...
I think you need to go to Wervis's on the eighteenth. We can help.
Okay, okay.
We're not, we're not...
We're not those people.
I'm just giving you it all. I'll let you know. I'll let you know it all. I try to, you know, be the, the little neighborhood wash of keeping the crime out of it, but... We're all set then?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
All right.